Good evening. We're gonna get this meeting started. Call this meeting to order. Mr. Collagen, can you give us the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. This meeting is a workshop meeting. We do have an action item on our agenda, and we will be moving right along. Reports, Dr. Garcia.
The only report, Madam Chair, that I have tonight is the approval of the Alliance Grant. That's the only report I have for tonight. And I just want to make the recommendation that the board approved the submission of the Alliance Facility Grant. By the way, it's a standard grant. We had it last year, and the governor has committed $30 million in spending for Alliance, persistent to Alliance Grant regarding facilities over a period of two years. The district received last year, $1.2 million last year, that provided for several needs, project in the district like renovation of bathroom, the elementary school, etc. This year, the recommended approval amount is $580,000. We plan to use this to renovate the parking lots at Wyndham and Barrows, new lots and rekeying of the building, heating at Sweeney, and security cameras at...
Dr. Garcia, that's what was done last year. Now what we're using it for this year?
We're using it for classroom heating at Sweeney.
Okay.
Security cameras at Wyndham High, middle school, and stem bathroom at the middle school, and networking upgrade at Wyndham High.
Okay. And anything else, I'm assuming, that comes along during the year? We can use that for any improvements across the district?
Well, it's very specific. It's very specific what it can be used. And so, the items that we just listed are the specific items that can be used. Can that be used for any...
Anything else? Okay.
Are they in the...
No.
Okay.
Because you'll have to approve those, the application for the grant. But that's what we want to use it for.
Okay. Well, thank you for that clarity. Any other questions?
I do have a question. Just for clarity, there was a conversation today that went on in the public forum. Margaret responded to it very well. I did as well, so did Mrs. Suba, that this is not funds that we are applying for to move the Companeros program to the middle school.
No. This grant...
I'm just doing this for clarity. I have this conversation. I'm trying to make sure that this gets put out there so it's said in the public forum.
Well, what I heard, they thought that this was a Companeros grant, and this is not a Companeros grant.
Correct.
Okay. I do want to say that we did, Wayne did, put $30,000 into the bathroom at the middle school. I don't know if people think that's would be for the Companeros grant. Okay? But this is to the things that we already want to do in the district that we don't have money for. Like I said, the rekeying of the buildings, the heating, $409,000 is what went into Sweeney for the heating of Sweeney.
Because half the building's hot and the other half is cold 90% of the time.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And any other questions? Well, moving right along, next on the agenda is the action item for recommended approval for submission of the Alliance Facilities Grant, which Dr. Garcia just explained what that application is being used for.
Thank you.
I need a motion.
I can mean approval of the submission of the Alliance Facilities Grant.
Second.
Okay. You both said it at the same time.
Give it to Paul.
What? John said that's the government.
Yes.
And the total on our grant was updated to $580,000, not to $500,000 that was published in the packet.
Exactly. So, we thought we had $500,000, but after some further research, we found out that we received $580,000. The same thing happened last year. The governor gave us an amount, and then a couple of weeks later, he increased that amount. And by the way, this is only for Alliance District.
Yeah, we are eligible for this. We haven't been awarded it yet. That's why we sent the application.
No, no. We have not received this yet. No. Who knows? Maybe once it gets in there, the governor says only $200,000. Who knows?
Thank you.
Okay. That's second...
Seven hundred thousand.
That's second by Mr. Collagen for clarity. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And moving right along, the workshop topic is the Middle School Sixth Grade Redesign Commissioners Network. And Dr. Garcia?
Yeah. I just wanted to get some... I don't know where it's going here. Something for you to give up, but I don't know where it's going. Hello? So, with me here tonight, I have Mrs. Brett Ferreri, Mr. McLaurin with me also today, and I also have Mr. Joe DiMartino from the Center for High School Secondary School Redesign, and I don't know, I'm sorry...
Marshall McGovern.
Marshall McGovern. As you know, we are very excited about the middle school and moving the middle school to excellence. We're very, very excited about the middle school. One of the things that we are looking at is how do we offer more meaningful and stronger experience for our students that are moving from fifth grade to sixth grade? As you know, middle grades is a very complex time for students, is really that time where there's a large percentage of growth intellectually and developmentally, but it's also the time where students make connection in school or detachment from school, and that can carry them for many, for many, for many, many years of future career. So, we are determined to make sure that the experiences that we provide our students moving from fifth grade to sixth grade are experiences that are strong, meaningful, and purposeful, that can help them to move forward. The research is very clear about what makes a strong middle school. And what makes a strong middle school is a coherent system of instruction, okay, and opportunities for students, and a relevant experience. We're very, very clear about that. So, we are eager to start the process at the middle school to provide to them that opportunity, to have a coherent system of instruction, rigorous instruction that is relevant, and also to have a personalized instruction, personalized opportunity, and also relevant experience. So, we will talk a little bit. I want to take a couple of minutes to just tell you a little bit of where we are and where we're going, and then I'm going to introduce Mr. Joe DiMartino. I'm going to introduce his colleague. And if, Joe, I didn't bring anything to read about, I have it on my desk, but Mr. Joe DiMartino has started with Brown University, with the Center for High School Redesign, the technical center, that work across the country with middle school and high school. Tremendous experience with Brown University. I believe right now in New Hampshire, the network of 13 schools in New Hampshire that have been redesigned, so from New Hampshire to California, to South Dakota, to Seattle, to all over the place. We're very lucky that we're picking his brain about what we make a stronger middle school for our students, and we want to make that experience for sixth grader. By the way, I'm only talking about sixth grader for this year, not seventh or eighth graders. We want to make sure that that transition is very smooth, but also that the train, the change doesn't impact the entire school at the same time. I look a lot from those experiences. So, I just want to give you a little bit about middle school. And you decided already, middle grade, you can't say...
Can this out?
No.
It's an eye test.
Joe, when you may be last one, I'll sit on. I have glasses. Okay. As I said before, this is a very developmental stage for students, that transition from elementary to middle school, very developmental. During this time, students develop a sense of connection or detachment. And so, we want to make sure that we have experiences in place, that students have meaningful sense of connection, because that really would help them to have a better transition to high school and even graduate from high school. Some key findings about successful middle school, and I know that you will address those better than I do, but there's some key findings about middle school, and those are the findings that we want to make sure that our sixth grader has them in seventh and eighth grade. And the first point is teachers work across the department, the group set of students. Keeping in mind that teachers get to know these students. When they do discussion about Mr. French, all the teachers in that team know about Mr. French. It's not isolated.
That's not good.
It's not isolated. So, given cross-discipline and the teaming component is very important. And so, we hear sometimes, oh yes, we have team at the middle school. The issue is what type of team do we have at the middle school? And so, what we want is, and the research is very clear, a team where every student is recognized, is acknowledged, and is meaningful, and so every teacher on the team know where Mr. French stands, what are his grades, what are his issues, et cetera, et cetera. Very, very important, of course, I said. High school community school are more likely to block scheduling. They recommend more, they recommend block of time for students in the middle school. Instead of going to seven and eight courses, they recommend that students have more larger period of time and have less courses at the middle school. And I think you will... The other one, they recommend increasing social time. And this instructional time will support both, can support intervention, but also can support acceleration, also can support enrichment, whatever we want to have. And courses that promote exploration. This is very, very important. So, middle school still not the technical, but it's also important to develop that sense of art, music, that exploration. And these came from design and information, so they're not mine. So, in Wyndham, what are we looking at in Wyndham? What is our objective as we look at? Again, I want you to keep in your mind what we want to do. We want the middle school students to have a more rigorous experience in middle school, a more challenging experience in middle school, but also more personalized experience in middle school, or make them more successful. And so, for Wyndham, what we want is improve the quality of middle grade education, what we want to achieve. Raise the law on how to be achievement, improve that middle grade transition. It is very important that we have a well-structured, developed plan of way students move from fifth to sixth grade. And that transition program is not only for students that are attending the school, it's the teachers, the administration, and also the parents. Moving from fifth to sixth grade impacts the entire student, the number of child. Create the most comprehensive middle grade program that is sustainable. This is something that I just received in that note that we are meeting again in May of third, right?
Yep.
With the State Board of Education. We met a couple of weeks, a couple of months ago.
December.
December. We went back in May of third. And so, the question that they asked us is what impact is the middle school having? Where is the middle school headed? What does the next level of excellence look for the middle school? And then, one of the most important question is how are we going to sustain the middle school? So, what are we trying to achieve at this particular time? We're trying to achieve a comprehensive middle school transition program. We really want the students that are leaving fifth grade right now, really have a comprehensive transition program that will put them in a better position to be successful at the middle school and at the high school. We really want to achieve a much appropriate middle school curriculum. And when I say appropriate middle school curriculum, a curriculum that is more relevant to the middle school students, a curriculum that is more challenging for the middle school students, definitely, and a curriculum that they can have a better relationship with their teacher. And thank you, social and emotional learning. You know, a couple of years ago, we didn't talk about this. Now, this is one of our favorite topics, Dr. Young's favorite topic. But we know that we can teach social and emotional learning in school, and that kids can learn to do this. You know, we know that we can teach them the skills. Kids go through a lot of emotions, making decisions, how to develop friendship, and we can teach them the skill of how to behave when they're angry. We can teach them the skill of how to make better decisions. We can teach them the skill of how to socialize with others, and that's the responsibility of the middle school. And then, if we know these things, not only with the parent and from the middle school experience, but they will also have a successful high school experience. Would that also mean that we have to continue this at the high school well? So, those are very, very simple here. Transition program helps students build a sense of community. They are taught the skills to socialize, they are taught the skills to make better decisions, they are taught the skills to calm down when they're angry, they are taught the skills to how to respond to conflict and how to resolve conflict constructively. Would this mean that we also have to do it at the high school? And so, transition program also respond to the need and concern of the students. So, one side doesn't fit all, and that's why you need to have a flexible schedule that allow you that opportunity to respond to the need of students. A middle school curriculum that is challenging, exploratory integration across certain areas. What do you write down? But a middle school curriculum that is rigorous, relevant, and relationship. We want to make sure that it's rigorous, that it's relevant, and that we have relationship with them. And the social and emotional learning, we want to develop that self-awareness, we want to self-management, social awareness, and build the relationship skills. So, we want to make sure that we can do these things, starting in the same way. The process for this, this is a question that you went to ask. So, one of the first things we did a couple of months ago is secure funding to develop this plan. So, we went out and secured some funding from the state through some grants to make sure we could start this process. We started discussion with the school personnel, with administration, and with some teachers, discussing this topic and reading research outside the room, talking to the development. Develop a committee. We're not here yet, but in the process of developing a committee, but that's the next step in the process, and then develop an action plan. So, the phase is all the applications. Phase one varies from April, where we have discussions with the team, the middle school, where we did some research, and where we secure the funding. Phase two will be from March to May, and so we end up phase right now. We develop a team that will include teachers, we include some parents, we communicate with stakeholders, and we develop an action plan. And phase three will be April to June. We communicate again with stakeholders, that's very important. We also will review the planning adjustments, and will start training our teachers, their motivational development, to prepare them to start the process in August. Any questions? Dr. Murphy, Mr. French, Mr. Collagen?
Quite clear. Thank you.
Well, I'm not the star of the night. The star of the night will be Mrs. Ferreri, Mr. McLaurin, and Mr. DiMartino, and his colleague. Mr. DiMartino, how this is what they do across the country, helping strengthen in middle grades and high schools across the country. And by the way, that you do, that you have been very, very successful, is recognized in the country at the institution that does best work for the company of middle school. Dr. Murphy, I know you have a question. I can see it in your eyes.
Well, I know you're still at the planning stage, but my curiosity is this. Okay, so this is very conceptual.
Yeah.
But really, really comes down to is, what does it look like as a bill schedule?
Definitely. So, part of the action plan is developing the bell schedule. Okay? And so, there have been discussion, and he will address that tonight, we have been discussion from central office and the middle school, what are we looking at? What should exploratory or elective look like per day, every two days? What should the core subject look like? So, definitely, there are different models, and the middle school will definitely select the model that best meet their needs. So, definitely, yes.
Any questions?
So, the schedule is very important, definitely, and that's part of the action plan.
Okay. So, it looks like he's eager and ready to go, so...
Do you need...
I could. Let me try to do it without the microphone.
You're sure, but if not, you can use it.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it if you could use a microphone so that, because we are televising this, so. People at home have to hear you.
Can I walk around and hand out stuff without talking?
Absolutely.
It's a little bit about us, but there's also some stuff in this panel, really, about middle schools. About research on middle schools. And I don't have the numbers.
Can I have an extra one? There's a board member. There's actually two board members that are not here.
Hi, ma'am.
Oh, there you are. Thank you.
All right.
I have a little bit more material that we'll hand out, okay? But this is kind of the starting point for us to really talk about our approach, how we do this, and give you some inkling of our experience on the national level with supporting the whole middle school concept and middle school grades. And Mr. Sewell is going to ask about the schedule, and I'm going to turn that over to Brett, because she's got it done. I mean, you know. All right? Right, Brett? Still there?
Just out.
Okay. And one of my, my colleague, Marshall McGovern, is here with me, and a third colleague has been working closely with the leadership at the middle school, Tony Ferrer, but he's down in Florida tonight. He'll be back for the next meeting next week.
April 7.
April 7. Okay. He'll be back for the April 7 meeting at the middle school. And he has worked closely with Brett, and we're comfortable that the schedule that's been created is basically the right schedule to move to two houses rather than the three houses, starting with just the sixth grade. So, I shouldn't point out as part of that, that you are fortunate to have some really good leadership at the middle school. And she's, Brett has impressed us, and the whole leadership team has impressed us. So, I think that's something that the community should be very proud of. But our approach is really, it's similar to the elements that Patricia put out. It's very similar, actually. And this document that's got the five gears shows that if you, the best learning, the one that's most relevant is when students are driving learning, or student-driven learning. That's the gear in the center. But in order to really get there, you need to have, you need to work on all of those other gears, like around student agency and shared leadership and a culture of inquiry in the school. And all of those things are things that we've been engaged in conversation with the leadership at the middle school, and the next document kind of lays out what that vision entails. Okay? And that's the one that has these various continuums that align with each of the gears. And then, on page four, on page four of that document, there are descriptions of what the ideal situation would look like for each of those continuums. Spent some time with Brett and the leadership team at the middle school, and they've basically concluded that the idea of moving to a student-driven learning is what will help make the real change, which is great, because that's what we agreed, okay, is that we want the students to be able to take charge of their learning and provide support in a variety of ways for students to be able to do that. Can't just say, go do it. There's got to be, it's got to be a supportive structure that builds in the classroom and in other places in the school. And those things, they will be happening. I'm confident that the middle school is on the right track to do all of that. Next document is a little bit about us, okay? It's a number of publications that we've had published. And you'll notice in there, one of the things on the right hand, sort of green, it's called Breaking Ranks in the Middle, and I put in an executive summary of Breaking Ranks in the Middle. We did this with the National Association of Secondary School Principals as a guiding document on how to bring about change in middle schools, okay? It's strategies for leading middle-level reform. So, this gives you an indication. And if you look at the strategies, I think it's on the third or fourth page, there's a list of the seven, the nine cornerstone strategies, I'm sorry. And there were seven in the high schools, there were nine in the middle schools. But if you look at them on that page, you will see that just about everything Dr. Garcia put up on her slide is part of what we believe and have been supporting schools to do. Okay? So, this is a quick summary of what we, of some background. We also think that it's very important that we begin the process of deepening the learning for kids at the middle school and bring that into the high school. And I have another document that we can hand out, a research study that shows that schools that focus on deeper learning at the high school are more likely to have much better success than schools that don't. Okay? And it's a big national study done by AIR, the American Institute for Research, and I'll have the executive summary of that for all of you. But it's important because you can't, it should start in the middle school, all right? This deepening of the learning should start in the middle school. And this means doing more in-depth projects, doing things that kids really have to get into the work and get them to become the workers and the teachers as facilitators of learning, not the impartor of the learning. So, that's, and in this study, and this was on 20 schools that did deeper learning compared with 20 comparison schools that were very much like them, their test scores were better, their on-time graduation rate from high school was better, and their college enrollment was all significantly better, significant results. So, we will give you this, and I have that for you, and I had something else still. And I also have another document where we'll talk about the value of assessing for deeper learning and what it entails, okay? So, these are things that can and should happen at the classroom, but I want to go back to that, the gears, the first document. And we've, so we've known that these are the elements that need to take place, student agency through things like teams with kids that are matched, that you had mentioned earlier, Dr. Garcia, or, you know, places where kids can exercise their voice in their education and be able to be empowered to make some choices with supportive teachers, so it's not just random. And what we've discovered is that, beginning with helping teachers to create a culture of inquiry in the school and in the classroom, especially in the block scheduling. Now, we didn't coordinate these presentations, so...
No.
It's the first time I saw it was just now, but what you were talking about is the right stuff, Dr. Garcia, so thank you. And so, the idea of the culture of inquiry is, that gives you the plan, the way to work with the longer blocks of time that are key in the research. So, the idea of a culture of inquiry to really help teachers to understand how to work in a 90-minute block instead of a 45-minute block of classes. And we found that to be extremely helpful in helping to change the culture, helping to get kids to understand that they have voice and choice in what's happening for them in their education, and it becomes a very helpful concept for the adults, because the adults also have inquiry, and that inquiry helps them to become better teachers and better connected with the students. Again, that relationship with students is at the heart of all of this. Okay? So, I've just laid that out. I'm ready for questions, I guess, and, you know, and then see where, I want to make sure that I answer your questions while I'm here. So, whatever, let's take it wherever it's going to go.
Any questions?
I have one.
Go ahead.
In Dr. Garcia's presentation, you don't have...
Dr. Gomez, use this microphone so they can hear you.
Closer.
Thank you. Okay. I'm just curious about what, in Dr. Garcia's presentation, if I may find it somewhere here, okay, there were guiding questions, guiding questions...
Okay.
Which helped you revisit the mission.
Okay.
I'm pretty much interested, you know. For me, it stood out, number seven, which reads, "With the growing diversity of school populations, do we need to plan schedules with, I guess, with permit extended learning time for those students who need additional time to meet course expectations?"
Dr. Gomez, where did you get this document?
It was here, but I couldn't read the...
The PowerPoint.
It was the PowerPoint.
It wasn't a PowerPoint.
It was on the PowerPoint.
Which PowerPoints are...
Guiding questions. Okay.
Thank you.
So, I don't know, I like to, can you expand a little? I think it's just connected to all of those.
Before you answer, can I say, that question was not, so we did not coordinate this. These questions are questions that we act ourselves as reflection, as we have in conversation on where we want to go. So, these questions are reflective questions.
I understand. I just want to know what you think, because I think it's really important.
Well, I think it's really important too, Mr. Gomez. My concern with added time is that it also needs to be planned so it isn't more of the same thing, okay? Because if the kids are bored in school, boring them for longer doesn't help.
It's strategic.
That's right. It has to be strategic, and it has to be activities that the kids can relate to and that they can, in that case, and, you know, it really helps to, there are things you can do during that time that can really open things up for kids, explore, expand the horizons, somehow get them connected to people in the community. All of those things are possible if you have more time. So, I'm in favor of definitely having more time.
Well, okay. Thank you.
Okay? Yes.
So, having worked in a middle school setting, in a team setting, and now I'm not in a team setting anymore, I found that the common planning time for teachers was really valuable. So, next year, is that going to be a daily common planning time, or twice a week, or what are you thinking for that?
What's the current status?
I can be loud. Do you want me to go to...
Yeah, but the people in TB land can't hear you.
All right.
Just want to add that we have not finalized that. They're just looking at different options of schedules.
It's a draft schedule at this point.
Yeah.
We'd like to have a draft schedule that would have common planning time, like Brett, is it daily?
So, what teachers have currently at Wyndham Middle School, and what will be continued next year would be common prep time, I just want to say this clearly. So, five days a week, they have common prep time. One day would be... One day would be mandatory common planning time with about a 45-minute meeting time that would be specifically meeting to plan. Another day would be 45 minutes of data team, and another day would be 45 minutes of, at the middle school, we call them kid meetings, they're really social emotional meetings. So, that's the same as what we currently have now. It would just be enhanced by the training that the CSSR would do for us.
And then my other question was, and this sounded kind of interesting to me, was on page four, the governance, where it talks about each student, students being nominated, so what would that look like? Because I'm familiar with a local high school that does something very similar to this right now, and the students seem to love it, but I feel like that's a large commitment.
You're talking about the site council? Or which one is it?
Yeah, on page, yeah.
Yeah.
To have a voice in student government.
Yep. So, it's, it's something that, that we've helped some number of schools in New Hampshire do, and it's kind of part of the culture in New Hampshire, that school governance is turned over to an elected body that has a majority of students. Okay? And, and it's really a way of increasing agency. So, while we put that down as the ideal, we don't expect you to go there initially. We hope that you should, use that as a target to get to, but, so we, you know, Pittsfield Middle High School in New Hampshire is one, one school that comes together that we've worked with, and they have, it's a middle high school, so with the governing, but the governing body of the school is 10 students and nine adults. The students are elected. Six of the adults are teachers that are elected by their peers, and three are appointed community members. And they, they are the governing body of the school. They are the school legislature, if you will, with the principal is the governor, okay? So, the principal has a veto, the principal, and the principal did once try to veto one of the decisions from that council, and the council overrode it, but with a supermajority they override it. And things like, I think, it's, it's all kinds of things, curricular things, bell schedule, all that goes to the site council in that school. And it, so, but what it does, and, and for the middle school kids and for the high school kids, is it gives them a real stake in, in the school. So, it's kind of an ideal that I don't expect, that we don't expect people to do everywhere, and certainly not start. It's not where you start, okay? But when you, if you're working in the classroom, and kids get their voice, voice and choice in the classroom, then you want to expand that to be more school-wide, you start looking into a way to have more elected students, and not a majority, maybe a third of the panel be students, you know, and then grow into it. So, it's, it's, it's an intriguing concept, and it's worked, and it's worked extremely well, okay, where it's been embraced. Thanks.
The question I have is that this is going to be for sixth grade. Now, if this is successful in sixth, these students want to be able to do the same thing in the seventh and seventh. Are we going to take the sixth grade, and we're going to follow this up through the system? Is that what the plan is?
Yes, that's the plan, yes.
That would be the plan, and that would be the right thing to do.
Okay, then what do we do when they get to freshman year high school?
Well, we're going to work on that. But I should already talk to Dr. Garcia, we're going to apply for a grant.
Yeah.
To include the middle school here and the high school, so hopefully we'll be successful in that, to really go to deeper learning experiences where there would be at the end of eighth grade, a gateway exhibition that students would have to do, that in order, which would make sure that they are prepared to be successful at the high school level. Okay? And then an additional gateway that we would do at the 10th grade to be prepared, to make sure that they're on track to graduate prepared for life after high school. So, that's, that's our vision, what we would ideally like to see. But I think that right now, one of the biggest challenges, and Marsh, you probably know more about it than I do, but one of the biggest challenges is the transition from the middle school to the high school. And that's a challenge almost everywhere. It's very uncommon for it to be a smooth transition. So, over the next couple of years, we will need to really focus in on that transition. What needs to happen differently at the middle school to make the transition smooth, and what needs to happen differently at the high school? So, that grant that I mentioned, if we're successful in doing that, that's going to give us the opportunity to really go deeply into that, into that, and really focus on that transition.
Yeah, because this is going to have to follow all the way up through the senior year.
Yeah.
And again, the same thing that we have for the students from fifth to sixth grade.
Right.
Is the same thing you're going to have through eighth grade to freshman year.
Yeah.
All right. So, we're looking maybe three years, we're looking at a seven-year cycle here, is that what we're looking?
Yeah. Well, well, what we might be able to do is start, just, you know, as we get going. First thing is the sixth grade, but then when we go to seventh grade, maybe we start ninth grade that year. Okay? So, there'd be a little bit of a gap for some, for those kids entering ninth grade at that time, but it means we won't have to wait seven years.
No, 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 yeah, I could say, you're looking at senior.
Yeah.
They're going to have the same, they're learning this process in middle school.
Right.
You don't want it to fall off when you get to the high school.
Right. So, one, one district we're currently working with started with sixth grade this year, and they've decided to do seven and eight next year, not just seven.
Good, so then we can do it three and a half years.
That's right. And then, so then you could go right from there to the high school. The high school has a number of different issues, though. It's not exactly the same.
It's a different thing, yeah.
It's not exactly the same, okay? Marsh was high school principal for a long time, and we work very closely with the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, and partner with them on a couple of, on a couple of things. So, the idea of what it takes to get accredited is important, and it's much more important at the high school level. You know, in high school, you've got to earn course credit, your GPA counts for graduation for admission to college. A number of pressures exist at the high school that, that we don't have to worry about at the middle school level.
Like the way for the PSAT, the SAT.
Yeah, all, you know, the college application process, you know, but it's, I don't know, do, do, kids go across the street for college, high school courses in the college?
Some do.
Some do, yeah. So, there's a potential here to do something really, really impressive at the high school level. I just, this is an aside, but I just go back, it was in Akron, Ohio, a meeting at the LeBron James Family Foundation with the University of Arkansas, and LeBron, I got to tell you, he's the best guy ever, LeBron. You may not like him, you may not be basketball fans, but what he's doing for kids in Akron is unbelievable. And, and, but it's, but the meeting also, we were meeting with people that I know very well from the University of Akron, and they actually offer their education methods courses in the high school. Okay? And then so that, in order to earn a credit, to, for your, you need to pass a course in education methods, right? The methods course, you have to pass that in order to get certified to be a teacher. And, and so they hold it in the high school. And the kids, the University of Akron students teach classes in, in Boberton High School as part of their methods course. Sorry, that's my phone.
What year, Carter, is that?
I'm sorry about that. I'm sorry about that, John.
That's okay.
Yeah. So, the idea of, so having a college right nearby is a real plus, and I don't know how much you take advantage of that, but, so again, that's a high school issue.
Yeah, most of we should, yeah.
That is what we should.
Yeah, and so we could get, if we could get them to have their education methods courses here, okay, where, where the college students could come here, work with a teacher in your building, as well as the college professor, and this isn't their student teaching, this is prequel, this is before the student teaching. This is a chance for them to understand the various methods of instruction through actually hands-on activities doing it. So, and LeBron is, they got community mentors, and what LeBron's doing over there is just phenomenal. He's committed to pay the tuition for up to 1,200 kids from Akron to go to, to go to the University of Akron.
He's doing great stuff.
Amazing. She's just, it's, I was blown away. Couldn't believe all this stuff that's going on. But, but they need it in Akron. They're more challenged, much more challenged than you are here in Windham, in trying to help kids, so, okay? But, so, but anyway, the point I wanted to make is, the partnership with the, in, in Akron, we're talking about partnership with the school district, the college, and the community. And all of those things can happen here, and there's no reason why they shouldn't be able to happen.
Yeah, I agree.
Dr. Sewell?
I didn't know you were a doctor. I called you mister, I apologize.
I'm not a medical doctor. My father was a medical doctor, so.
So, everybody knows you was Dr. Sewell.
I'm a PhD. Well.
He's been there.
I'm only a doctor in an academic setting. Anyway, I just, I have a couple of technical questions, but I would like to follow up a little bit on what Mrs. Lassard raised. My stepdaughter is, has been working to develop the Boston Student Advisory Council for more than 20 years, so.
Oh, wow.
I'm very familiar with that organization, and that's essentially, that's a district-wide student government.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
They influence board policy.
Yeah, yeah.
They've been, they've been very influential in Boston public schools. It's, it's actually remarkable what they've been able to accomplish, and I think it's very useful.
It's surprising what the kids can do if you give them a chance, isn't it?
Yeah. I think, I think it's, I think we should be heading in that direction. We shouldn't lose sight of that.
Thank you.
In your transformational level definitions.
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
What are you talking about in terms of heterogeneous groupings for equity?
Right. And we say heterogeneous groupings with an honest challenge, don't we? We don't say heterogeneous groupings without talking about honest challenge. So.
Well, it says, "Each student is guaranteed through heterogeneous groupings the opportunity to learn curriculum at the highest achievement level possible."
Yep.
So, what, what's?
All right, so, again, my preference, and our work is always, like, this is developed locally. We have to help you create a plan, okay? My preference, if it were my school, I would do heterogeneously grouped classes, but every class would offer an honest challenge that would allow those kids that had the capacity or the desire to go more deeply into the subject area could, and they would earn honest credit for that. Okay? So, it's, it's, it's an honest program within a heterogeneously grouped class. That would be my preference, if you follow me.
So, rather than separating the, rather than separating the honor students from, if that's what you're talking, okay, that's fine.
But the honor students can still, still have the chance to do that, the deeper learning that you expect in an honest class. So, we're not, we don't want to block that out, okay? And.
So, you don't want to put a ceiling on kids, is essentially what you're saying.
No, no, I don't want to, I don't want to put a ceiling on kids.
That's good.
No, we don't want to put a ceiling on kids. The genesis of this, guy that worked with us around 20 years ago named Bob Macken, was created a, he was found, he was the founding principal of a high school in New Hampshire, the Sauhegan High School, which is nationally recognized, great school, very, very good school. And, and they opened it, they wanted it to be heterogeneously grouped. Kids were coming in, the school just opened, there was only ninth graders, kids were coming in from a middle school that was heavily tracked, okay? Where there were some kids in a higher class, higher track than others, and he sits here in a way, happened to be six boys. Six boys in that class came in and met with him, and basically said, "This isn't working for us, we're not being challenged." So, he appointed those six kids to be his advisory committee. "You're going to advise me to figure," so we can figure this out. "So philosophically, I believe in heterogeneity because it benefits most kids, but I got to make sure it works for you." So, those six kids worked with him, they created honest challenges for every course at Sauhegan High School. They still do it at Sauhegan High School, it was over 20 years ago that this conversation took place. Those six kids, four went to Dartmouth, one went to Notre Dame, one went to Duke, and they, all six have said that they were as well-prepared as those kids who came from courses, from schools that did all the AP and all the other stuff. So, if you set it up appropriately and set it up right, you could have heterogeneity where kids learn from each other. I, personally, my personal opinion, Mr. Gomez, is Hispanic kids, English learners, should be mixed in with the other kids, and they shouldn't be predetermined that they're not going to be high, high-achieving kids. So, so let's set up structures that allows for that to happen, okay, but that doesn't punish others by saying, saying, you know, you can't go as fast as you would like, you can't go as deep as you would like in the subject area. So, we can, but we can do that. You can set up that so that it works for every kid.
By the way, you have an overthought to here.
Oh, you're Dr. Gomez, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Dr. Gomez.
Okay. So, yeah, it's my understanding that this tracking or not tracking has been kind of a controversy in education.
It has been.
Probably since I was a junior, in junior, or middle school.
Yes.
Junior high.
That's a long time ago. Yes, Dr. Sewell, it has been a contentious issue, but we, we think that you can do both in a way that works for all kids.
Okay. Well, I think that, that modern technology, the kinds of things that you can do with this sort of thing.
Yeah, that's right.
Makes it a whole lot easier to have students proceeding at different rates within the same classroom than it was before you had this kind of technology in students' hands. But, under timeframe, you refer to non-traditional groupings. So, so what's, what's, what's the difference?
Non-traditional time groupings, I think.
Yeah, well, it says to flexible times and in non-traditional grouping, so we've got, we've got home.
Well, that isn't what you had just talked about. I believe Connecticut now offers it as an option, but in New Hampshire, it's the mandate, okay? In Vermont and Maine, it's the mandate. Seat time can no longer be used to determine whether you've passed a course or not. Earning course credit at the high school level has to be based on demonstrating mastery. So, to get back to your point, everybody can proceed at their own rate, at different rates. So, what it means is the groupings will change as, as kids move along, okay? They can still be heterogeneously grouped, and, but, but kids who progress faster and demonstrate mastery faster move into the next heterogeneous group. And so, it's, you know, it's challenging environment, but we've been working with schools in New Hampshire to help support this kind of a change for the last decade, and it's, it's fascinating, it's interesting, but it's really our way to personalize to try to reach every student.
So, this would be essentially, if students might be taking 10th grade level courses for some courses, and 11th grade level courses for other courses?
Yep.
Okay, I mean, well, universities have been doing that sort of thing for years, so.
Yeah, yeah, and, right. So, so we just came from school in Massachusetts. We were at Parker Charter School in Devon's, Mass, that Ted Seizer started, some of you might, you might remember Ted, he was at Brown. And, and they, kids don't advance just because they've passed a year or two, and they, they have to go through what they call gateways. We were earlier talking about gateways. Kids have to, at the end of what is a traditional eighth grade, they call it the end of Division One, okay? Kids have to go, they have to gateway in humanities, right, language arts, social studies, and they have to, they have to get gateway in math and science, and they have to gateway in Spanish or wellness, okay? So, they got, and, and so, and they do that at the semester. Parker, they don't do it whenever the kid's ready, they do it every semester, okay? So, that a number of kids after three semesters, and not four, would gateway, say, "I'm ready to gateway in humanities," but not science, okay? So, they'll, they go, they'll go forward into the next Division Two, so they go in with the ninth graders in humanities, but they're still in with the eighth graders in science. And that's the culture in that school, okay? But, and again, there's no one right way, and our chan, our charge is to help Windham and Willamette figure out what's the Windham right way, okay? So, all of these things that we throw out there are ways to help you think about potential things that are different, but you've got to decide. And already, we've had these conversations and part of the planning with the middle school, and there are things that we know the middle school would like to do, okay? But, but nobody's going to do all of this. Nobody's going to do all those things, because it's too much. We just want you to do a critical mass of, you know, two or three things in each of the five categories, because that'll make a big difference for kids in your community.
I think the non-traditional grouping's idea is, is a good way to go. I can see that it could be administrative headache, just to kind of get.
Would it be administrative?
Be the tracking and the scheduling for young people who are.
Marsh is sitting here thinking, "How would I do this?"
You have to put the needs of the students first, and, you know, just the same way you look at this and decide where are you going to start. It's a whole group decision, and I really believe if it's important enough, you can make it work.
And, and I just want to tell you, I think you have the leadership at the middle school that fully believes that, that they can make it work. And besides that, I fully believe that they can make it work. And besides that, I fully believe that they can make it work.
Well, it's doable, like I said, universities have been doing it forever, so.
That's right, that's right. Well, you know, Brown University, we, we eliminated any graduation requirements 50 years ago. And, and, yeah, so Brown, no, you can design your own courses, should design your own maze, no required courses, you can do independent study for every course for all, for the whole year, you can take every course pass/fail. So this has been part of my life, is, is the idea that we're going to make it work for every kid, all right, so, because I went to Brown, and they worked at Brown, and all that stuff, so.
Well, in, in the environment that we're in, which is.
Yep.
Brown has the advantage of being a private university.
Yes, 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 we do. We do have some advantages that Public School doesn't, but I am a big believer in Public School.
But we do, the state has a, a, basically a set of requirements to earn a, a high school degree, but, you know, in terms of course credits for various things, but, but the way those requirements read, it doesn't necessarily say you have to take these in the ninth grade and these in the 10th grade and these, you know, it's usually a set of requirements.
Yes, sir.
Do all of these things in, in your high school graduate.
Right, and the state now also says you could use demonstrating mastery rather than the time spent in class. That gives you some flexibility on scheduling, it gives some flexibility on how the kids can create a pathway to go through that. But, so when you have that, though, it becomes important that each student has a personal learning plan, you know, to track their progress, and, see, these are all, this is all part of, of what it would take now in this environment, but, but you think about, you, you got your little iPad there, or whatever, the Chromebook, whatever it was you were looking at.
It's an iPad Mini.
But, it's an, you get your iPad Mini, but with that, I mean, kids could, they can go almost anywhere to do their education. We just need to figure out how to make sure that they're actually learning what we want them to learn before, in, in order to get a high school diploma and to go on and be successful in life. So the challenge is a little different than it's been. It's not about making sure we present them with everything they need to learn, we've got to make, they got to demonstrate mastery, they got to demonstrate that they actually did learn it, and that's the challenge.
One of the things that this community, would benefit this community, and it needs to start in middle school in order to really work, is for the students who are capable of proceeding at that pace to be able to complete college-level work.
While, while.
Before they graduate from high school, because they can reduce the cost of college that way, and we've got lots of young people.
Right.
Who have enough difficulty as it is affording the, the cost of college. So if we can reduce the cost of college by 25 or 50 percent.
Be great.
We're, we're doing something great for our local families.
Yeah, and, and that would be great, and you do have, you know, a university right across the way here.
Well, we've got another one 13 miles up the road.
So, right, right, so you have the opportunity to be able to have kids take college courses as part of their high school program, so that they can graduate from high school having earned a number of college credits. And that, what I like about doing that is, you know, people talk about admission to college, but you know, there can be no better proof of success in college than success in college. So those kids who are being successful in college courses when they're in high school are demonstrating that they're prepared to do college-level work.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so we should be, we should be offering kids, and it's, you know, one course at a time, or, you know, a couple of courses, not the whole thing, but it's, it's basically helping the kids to understand what they need to do to be successful in college, okay? While helping colleges to understand, because a part of their transcript's going to be courses they took at, you know, Eastcon, Eastern, right?
Eastern.
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 Eastcon is our RESC.
What?
Our regional.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. So it's Eastern Connecticut, but you don't say Eastcon, you say Eastern.
Eastern Connecticut State, ECSU.
I got it, I got it, I got it, you know, I should have known that. I know Southern, I know Southern.
Southern, right, this is Eastern.
Okay, got it, sorry.
Mrs. Lambert, you have questions?
When you were speaking, and I'm totally buying into the high school thing, because as you saw me run out, it's sports night here, and I have a freshman, so I was running out and running back, and I'll be running out again in a little bit when I get another text that something else is up, but, um, I'm really interested in the, you know, being able to work past mastery. My, my son is, does well in school, he came from our Magnet School, so this was a step down in facilities, a step down in technology and stuff like that, and is doing excellent work here, but he isn't being challenged, and that's been, you know, a discussion I've had with people in the building and with people on the board, but, um, but I'm.
So you need an honors challenge that I talked about.
Yeah, he's in honors classes, and he needs to be challenged more, but anyways, that's my personal thing, but the cost. This is a thing that happens in Wyndham, and Dr. Sewell and I have been on the board the longest out of everybody here, so we've seen this, this ebb and flow of, you were talking about grants, and we fund something with grants for a few years, and then the grant goes away, and we're talking seven years, and it's a three-year grant. Now we've got students who have been challenged and know what it's like to be challenged, and know what it's like to be valued through the governance portion of it and stuff like that, and that's going to suddenly go away because we're a poor community and we can't afford to sustain it. So that's a huge concern of mine.
Right, and it's a good, it's a good question. Our, our approach is the grant will provide professional development that would change things, and then you, so that you could do it without us.
Build off of it.
That's, that's, that's our way of.
How does it address turnover? It's a huge, it's a huge problem in our district, I'm trying to be honest, too.
And I would hope that, and, and this is, we've been able to do this in some communities, but not all, that the group, the first group that we train become leaders and trainers of the new teachers that come in, okay? So that turnover doesn't have that big an impact. My, also, my experience has been that turnover of the building leader happens more often than turnover of teachers.
Turnover of the building leader in this building, and recently in the middle school, has been significant.
Right.
To say the least.
Right, so, so part of our effort is to work with leadership, but not just the building leaders, because, because we found that the teacher leaders are more likely to stay.
Okay.
Okay? And, and, and that, you know, but they, there's turnover with them too, I mean, you know, people move on for various different reasons, but it keep, but you, we can't count on leadership being in any one position where that person might leave, okay?
Okay.
So we got to work more broadly, and, and, which we do.
Okay.
And the idea of teachers working collaboratively really helps them to develop some of the leadership capacity skills that, that they can use to help lead things going forward. You know, and like, you on a doctor, are you Miss Loser?
No, no.
So, you talked about the common planning time, the things that you did, well, that's an opportunity for teachers to step up and show leadership, and then that common planning time can continue. A new teacher comes in, they go to the same common planning time group, and they get brought up to speak quickly. So, I mean, that's just one example, but there's a lot of them. Marsha, did you want to add?
I was just going to say, when you look at something like a, a culture of inquiry or an actual, that's what you can sustain once you have the skills. There's, there's turnover in every building. I was a principal in an inner-city district, I was a principal in a suburban district.
Yep.
It, it can be, you know, some years you don't lose that many people, next year you can, and, but there are always going to be people who, no matter what is going on, can carry that, and once you believe it that way, you don't want it to change and be any different. So, you know, everyone's coming together and looking, where are the most important pieces here as you look at this model?
Right.
But you see that no matter what, the student-driven learning is always at the center, so once people have the skills to make that happen, you can sustain it.
And it becomes culture within the system.
Correct.
It's not dependent on five or six teachers, it's dependent on, on, on the philosophy and the culture and the buy-in within the district.
Yes.
So as long as that culture remains, you can lose people, and, and whoever remains trains those new people coming in.
Well, that's, that's good in theory, but I was on the board when Barrows opened, and I was part of the organization during the, the building of it and stuff like that, and they were inquiry-based trained through the Connecticut Science Center, blah, 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 and then we got a new superintendent with different ideas, and maps came about, and all things that are necessary to help our students do well on those big tests, those big stinking miserable tests that I hate, but that has taken over, the inquiry-based, and so there's a clash of culture now that we're seeing, and the students that have come from Barrows, this is their first year here at the high school, were taught a little bit differently than the students who have come from the middle school. So there's this paradox of how students have been taught to learn and how they're actually learning, and where they're going, and, and so it's, it's been a difficult mash that's come about here, and I don't, I, I am totally for this, I told you, I have a freshman, it's going to be too late for him by the time this gets to high school.
Well, let's hope not.
But that doesn't mean that it's not too late for the really important, other really important kids, but I'm really concerned that this is another, something to get started, and then we run into this roadblock like we have at the Magnet School.
Yeah, I agree, and, and it's something, but, but I also agree that it's got to be a community-wide conversation, a community that, that agrees that this is the way it should be. You're fortunate to have great leadership here in the district right now.
Yeah.
Let's take advantage of that now.
Okay. Well, those are just concerns, that's all.
Yeah, no, and they're perfectly legitimate concerns, and keep reminding us of that.
Okay. You told me to remind him, we all heard that.
There you go. It's okay.
You talked about social and emotional, but, I mean, certainly the, the content and things are important, but the skills, other kinds of skills that we talk about, sometimes they're called soft skills, executive functioning skills, 21st century learning skills, those skills to collaborate, to work together, those are the things that impact the culture of the school, and I'd like to think that you can do it so it stays no matter what. Some of the other schools that Joe has mentioned have had district leadership change, but the belief is in that school.
Everyone gets to retire.
So we're here to help you to do that.
Everyone gets to retire.
Someday.
Someday.
Dr. Gomez.
Okay, I am curious, you know, you have talked about successful experiences in this, but have you have any in a school, district like ours, like ours, with high levels of poverty, with a lot of English language learners, and that's what I was so worried about, the after-school things, you know? What has been your experience in achieving success in a district like this?
Okay, uh, it, it's, I got to tell you, it's more, it's more challenging when you have lots of English learners, okay? We know that. I don't know, do you mind if I tell them about my family?
Yeah, definitely.
I, I, I had six children, four were adopted, two were adopted from Guatemala when they were eight and 12 years old, and trying to get them an appropriate education is why I do this, okay? I mean, I adopted them 30 years ago. They've grown, they're doing well, but getting them an appropriate education was significantly more challenging than it was for the, for the, my two biological kids, okay? So, so, so I, I understand the experience, I understand the issues, that English, the culture was different for them, and, and they, they were in our family, so, so they're, for them, the culture wasn't as bad as it was for other kids in the community, so, so we care about them a lot. We're involved in a couple of projects right now, working in Tarrytown and Austin, New York, and in Shelton, Connecticut here, to help middle schools and high schools to do a better job with their English learners, and the work in Tarrytown and Austin so far has been very good. It's a lot of common planning time, teachers working together, looking at the data on how these kids are doing, doing some co-teaching in the classrooms, and, and, you know, really figuring out how to make it work for those kids. But it also includes a lot of connecting with the community, okay? So, I mean, so really, you know, when, when we talked about the social-emotional stuff, that becomes really important for the English learners, because they're not comfortable in this culture yet, and, and we hope that they will be able to become cultural, so, comfortable in our culture, and that means making sure they get all the supports they need. So that's the challenge of it, in a way. A lot of what you see in here is not explicit saying, "We do this because it'll work for English learners," but a lot of this that's in here, "We do it because it works for English learners," okay? It's not explicitly stated, but that's what we believe. I think things like the personalization and making sure that kids feel comfortable in the school, feel like there's an adult that cares about them. We, I was doing a training to create an advisory program, where we broke down a big school into small units, and every kid had, was part of a group of dozens or so kids that were tied to an individual mentor. And, and a couple, in that training, there were these two teachers, there was, at a charter school in Los Angeles, okay, who talked about how their kids, and their kids were all immigrants, all English learners, right? So they don't respond to the traditional rewards and sanctions that we responded to when we were students, okay? They don't, and, and they don't, you know, you tell them it's going to run their transcript, "Well, what's a transcript?" You know, so, so, flunk, who cares? What's that mean? You know, they don't know any of those things, but they will work, this is what these guys were saying, and it's absolutely true. They will work if there's an adult in the building that cares about them, and cares about whether they do the work, and that's the culture we need to create, and that culture does in fact work, and it works really well. So, okay, all right, I mean, I don't know if I answered your question. Yeah, you hit it, I mean, it's something I care about.
It's just a question that just.
Yeah, yeah.
Relieve that question.
Yeah, we, there's a school in Washington State, now, I can't take credit for working at that school, but the principal who did this came and worked with us, so, okay, 400 students in the high school, 90 percent poverty, a 90 percent minority, something like 30 or 40 percent of the kids were children of migrant farmworkers, they were all Hispanic, and, and when Ricardo Asparza became the principal, the, the school had the highest crime rate.
Which school is it?
It was Granger High in Granger, Washington.
Yes.
It's in Washington State, and, and it's in the Yakima Valley, had the highest crime rate in the state. There was a murder in the school the year before he became principal. He, and they had the lowest test scores in the state and the lowest graduation rate, okay? And, and he decided, well, and then, he starts as principal, and a woman who had been active in the PTA, who, her, he had to expel her son because, you know, he was just doing, he was criminal, right? Expels the kid, the mother comes in and says to Ricardo, she said, Ricardo, you know, "You've got to help me, this kid's a senior, I got to, and he's, he's got to graduate, I got to, I, I, I need him to graduate to get a good job." So Ricardo pulled out the transcript for the kid, and saw that in his three and a half years at the high school, he'd only passed six courses, okay? The mother never knew, she didn't know to look at a transcript, she didn't know to look at the report cards, the kid told her she was doing fine, right? And this, and she was active in the school. So he, so Ricardo was determined that he was never going to be put in that position again. He was never going to have to tell a mother, he left in tears that her child wasn't going to graduate. We were going to make sure that every one of these kids graduated, every one of their parents knew where they were on the path to get, to get done, okay? So Ricardo implemented a strong advisory program with a small group of students, met with a teacher every day, four days a week, actually, and, and, and they all had a, a personal learning plan, and they, and they had semester, every semester, they had a, a student-led conference. She knew exactly what I was going to say. They did the student-led conference where the students presented their plan, including their transcript, to their parents, and, and they made it so that for 10 semesters in a row, every kid had a related adult they lived with come into school to find out how they were doing, and the kids presented it. And so the graduation rate went, it became a 90, 90, 90 school, 90 percent poverty, 90 percent minority, 90 percent graduation rate, 90 percent going right out to secondary education. And it took five or six years, but, but they got to it. So, so those are the kinds of structures that we would put in place that, that, they work for all kids.
Yes.
Not just English learners, but they work very well for English learners, too.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Dr. Gomez.
If I may, so the high school is at a different point than the middle school, the middle school staff is ready for the change or for the enhancement.
And the leadership is.
The leadership is ready, the parents are ready. The high schools are at a different position, however, if we're moving the middle school, we have to move the high school, as you said before, because students will be able to come. One of the issues that we do have, and that's why this is so important, is that the same way that we have kids that need more additional time for learning, we do have kids in the high school that I believe that are not challenged to their full potential also, and so we need to find a way that we can give both of them.
Yep.
That opportunity. I really think that as we look at getting content better, getting the common core in place, that's, that's not the only change that we need to do. I'm glad that you mentioned student-led conference, because if you recall, you were the one that trained my high school in Virginia to do it, and I was surprised to see that every teacher-parent conference at the high school, the parking lot was to the topic, full of parents, because every parent's wanting to come to see their student present.
Right.
Not only that, my high school rate increased, my graduation, my AP courses increased, and it was a wonderful experience. And the school in Washington that you're talking about has been future, and NBC and CBN, the change that has been taking place. So, I think the high school is going to position themselves to move forward.
So.
I think so.
Great, you know, we, we've worked in Springdale, Arkansas, it's a district which is 22,000 students, 60 percent minority, 50 percent of the kids are Hispanic, 20, 10, 10 percent of them. 2,000 kids are from the Marshall Islands, the Marshall East, they have their own language, their own culture, and it doesn't match anything that we, we know anywhere else, Springdale, Springdale, Arkansas, and the second largest district in the state. Every one of those twenty-two thousand kids does two student-led conferences every year, and the parents are just blown away. It's just the best way to connect to the parents. And all of those kids, and, and they do it in Spanish, if they're doing it in Spanish, with their pa, you know, but, or they do it in English, and they, it's every, I, I'm flabbergasted. We started working with them, uh, three, four years ago, and it's every one of the twenty-two thousand students. And I, and it's not that hard to implement that element, right? Like, you know, like you said, we can do that, and we can do that here at the high school now.
Yeah.
We could, you know, so that it becomes a change that can happen right away, and it, and it's amazing what happens. You go from high school, nobody comes to the teacher conferences. You make it a student-led conference.
And everybody comes.
And everybody comes.
Yep.
It's amazing what happens.
I, I'd like, I'd like to make an observation. Um, it's not new for me. Um, I've always believed that, um, human children are designed to learn, and, uh, mostly we get in the way of that.
I like that.
What you're talking about, what you're talking about, in my view, Duffdale's very nice with our compañeros program, and, uh, in my mind. And, uh, doing everything we can as adults who lead the system to help them do what they do naturally is our job.
Yeah. I love it, thank you. Tell me about the compañeros.
I don't know if you want to discuss compañeros tonight. This is the night to discuss compañeros.
Okay, okay, all right. But, but. Just one sentence, so.
We, we do have a dual-language program in the district.
Oh, yeah.
A, a dual-language emergency program.
I didn't know how you call the compañeros.
Yeah, K through, K through eight.
Yeah.
That has been in place for over twenty-five years, and it's a model program in the, in the, in the state, in state, in the state of Connecticut. However, there is a great demand for the program, so we have people on waiting lists at every grade level, and is, is one of the objective of the board, uh, at this particular time, to enhance the program and to strengthen, and to strengthen the program.
That would be great. I, I, I think that would be great. I think that is ideal, and be, and actually being able to bring that into the high school would be good. You said it goes through eighth grade now.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Well, the, the long-run objective is to have a dual-language program in the high school.
Yeah.
So, so we have a dual-language program, K to eight.
Yep.
But high school would be, you'd have an opportunity to continue in Spanish or, uh, expand to French.
Different language.
Italian, related, related Romance language, or maybe an internal.
It would be great if every kid graduated, uh, was bilingual.
Correct.
At least.
Yeah.
If you do that in the district as a goal, that would be something.
Well, the state of Connecticut is, is in the process of approving, while approving, discussing the biliteracy seal for graduation. New York already approved it, so it's Washington State, so it's California, so it's Florida, so New York is in the process, and our director of bilingual education is on the committee. So we will hope that they will approve the seal of biliteracy, uh, for graduation students. But I do want to say that I'm excited about what can be done at the middle school. I do think that, um, programs like these, or, or, it's a conceptual framework that we want to implement at the middle school, will strengthen the middle school program and give students the opportunity to have that rigor-relevance or relationship. We definitely need to move to a more personalized learning experience for middle school students. We need to move to that coherent system of rigorous instruction. And teaching content is important, we want students to be able to do the equation, the fraction, et cetera, et cetera, but that cannot be done if we don't, we don't establish that coherent system of, of rigor-relevance or relationship. And I think we, the middle school is in the right position to move forward. I know we have to focus on the high school a little bit, that is, not in the same position that the middle school, but, um, the K through eight is on a jet, the high school is not still the bus stop yet, waiting a little bit, uh, but I think they'll have no choice when they see that the rest of the district is moving forward.
Great, very good.
So how long you're going to be in the district?